Okay, we're gonna try this again. It's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call our meeting to order. And I'm gonna ask Lauralee to please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessem.
Here.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Here.
Thank you Lauralee. And if, what? Were you not finished? I thought, okay. I'd like to ask Stu to lead us in the pledge. And it's up there.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stu. And Dawn, would you please read the mission statement?
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members, community members, to lead, to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. And our first item on the business is the adoption of the agenda. So it's the adoption of the October 18th, 2023. Meeting is today. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
So I have first from Stu and a second from Dawn for approval of the agenda. Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you Lauralee. The next item that we have would be the approval of the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first is from September 20th, 2023. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for September 20th, 2023.
So moved.
I have a first from Dawn.
Second.
And that was from?
Alexandra.
Alexandra, thank you. Such a long table. I can't tell where we are. Okay. Lauralee, would you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And then we have the approval of the minutes for October 4th, which was our study session. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the study session of October 4th, 2023? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for October 4th.
So moved. Second.
Was that Alexandra? Okay, so it was Dawn followed by Alexandra. Thank you. Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And we'll move into public participation. We'll turn it over to Dr. Schaefer.
So, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education and community. A few short announcements. First, we want to thank the town of Berthitt this evening. Right before our board meeting, we had an opportunity to have dinner and some discussion with the city manager, the mayor, and several members of the staff, as well as, I think at least one town council member. So, we always appreciate our opportunity to be down here in Berthitt. We are here in October and in April. And so we enjoyed kind of our pre-meet with them prior to this meeting. And we also just really are appreciative of Berthitt High School and the staff that works so hard and diligently to prepare for this meeting. I know it is an extra effort and we certainly appreciate that. This week, October 16th through 20th, is Classified Appreciation Week. So this is the week that we take the opportunity to honor and thank all of our classified staff members from across the school district. And whether they are building, school building-based positions, nutrition service workers, transportation department, grounds and maintenance, facility staff, and those that work in our district office and technology departments, we really thank each and every one of our classified staff for making a difference. They are, in many ways, are behind the scenes, but they're definitely in front of the work. And we couldn't do it without them. So we certainly take the, this week certainly we thank them. We should be thanking them every week and every day. A bit later, the board will be asked to pass a resolution just proclaiming this week as Classified Appreciation Week. And we do appreciate our classified staff members. October is Principal Appreciation Month. So classified gets a week, but our principal's got a month. And so, we certainly thank all of our principals and assistant principals for the work that they do to provide leadership within their schools and their buildings. They have an unwavering commitment to the students, staff, and community of our schools. We thank our principals and assistant principals. They do a great job for us, very talented professionals. And again, October is National Principal Appreciation Month. Conferences are taking place here in the Thompson School District this evening, as well as all day tomorrow. So very full and busy days. Actually, conferences are taking place in this building right now. So, parents and students, a lot of these are student-led conferences. And students are certainly invited to attend conferences, get to receive some progress updates on how things are going during the opening months of the school year. Friday, there is no, so no school for students Thursday and Friday. Certainly, our students are excited about that. And then for staff, Friday is no school for them. And then finally, Friday, I'll be meeting with my elementary and middle school student advisory groups. And so, each, several times during the year, I have opportunities to meet with student groups at the elementary, middle, as well as high school levels. Students are selected from each of our schools, including our charter schools. They provide me with feedback and perspective on issues that are important to them and important to the student experience here in Thompson School District. Members of my leadership team attend. We invite our principals to attend. Board members will be invited to attend for second semester. Excuse me, but the students offer brilliant insights into their experience here in the Thompson School District. And what we do is we take the feedback that they provide to us. We work to improve those experiences. So next, I want to move on to a monthly feature that's called Top of Thompson. And our new feature that we started last month called Community Champion. This is an opportunity to illuminate and elevate our amazing and incredible staff, as well as community partners here in the Thompson School District. The Top of Thompson Awards are peer-nominated. That is, that staff members are nominated by their peers. We have three job categories in classified, licensed, and APT, which is Administrative Group. And so, we have members from our licensed and APT here. So we'll start with licensed. We'll start first with Heather Anderton. She is a math teacher at Mountain View High School. And she was nominated by Danielle Ballier.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer, board. I did nominate Heather because she deserved it completely, but here's my nomination. Mrs. Heather Anderton has worked tirelessly to mentor and coach new math teachers. For the past three years, Heather has mentored these new teachers, lesson-planned with them, and built a great PLC. Unfortunately, each of these years, at least one, if not more, of these new hires quit within the first two weeks of school. Ms. Anderton did not hesitate to jump in, pick up the slack, and pick up the slack. She has spent countless hours of her own prep time writing subplans, making copies, organizing materials, and prepping these unfilled classes. The MVHS math department could not run without her. On top of this, she is a fabulous educator, teaching at all levels of math. She relates to students in AP Stats and in Financial Algebra. It is a very special educator that can make these connections. MVHS and TSD are beyond lucky to have an educator of this caliber. Mrs. Heather Anderton is truly top of Thompson.
So congratulations, Heather. We have a plaque and a lot, if you can grab that. I can speak to Heather's excellence. She was actually one of my daughter's math teachers, so she is a dean exceptional.
Personal experience.
Personal experience, yes. Next, we move on to APT. So it's Mountain View night here at Berthitt High School. We would like to invite up Mary Lane, who is the Assistant Principal of Mountain View. And she was nominated by Jessica Galvin and Kelly Evans.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schaefer, board. Here we go. Oh, I can honor both of you. Look at that, that's awesome. Okay, all right. So Mary Lane is an amazing asset to Mountain View High School. She serves as a mentor to definitely myself and several other of our staff. Mary is always available to help staff or students. Her doors open to brainstorm ideas for the classroom and come up with new literacy strategies or anything else that we're looking for. As the leader of our professional development team at Mountain View, she is always open to our ideas in how to deliver innovative ideas to the staff to help us with our school IUP and our individual Randa goals. She is a kind person. She is a great mentor who always gives her all to any task. And she's a great asset to Mountain View High School.
Mary, congratulations. Well deserved. Please help yourself to the plaque. So last but not least is our classified staff member. And so, neither the person who was nominated nor the nominator could be here tonight. So it was Angelica Estrada Campos, who is an Equity Diversity and Inclusion Technician. She was nominated by Maria Gabrielle. So I will read Maria's words. Angelica, Anhelica, goes above and beyond her work each day. She's early to work and is a self-starter. She has an infectious smile, laugh, and positive words to share with all. Her work ethic is unmatched. She is knowledgeable about technology, marketing, Google Suite, and shares her knowledge and skills with her peers during classified training days. She keeps the EDI team organized and looking good. She's also been flexible about supporting other departments when asked. So her job has doubled this year to support a new director. She is adaptable and positive. I can't say enough good things about her. She is a star in TSD. So congratulations to Anhelica. Next, we move on to our featured school. And I'm going to invite Executive Director Sarah Rasmussen to come forward. As Sarah's making her way up, please know that... Oh, I, you know what? Before I do that, I'm gonna do our Community Champion Award. I see. So Pam, I'm gonna ask you to come forward. So our community, thank you. Our Community Champion for the month of October is the Bohemian Foundation. And Pam is representing the Bohemian Foundation. Erica Schlegel nominated the Bohemian Foundation. So they are located in Fort Collins, but they work with TSD and Loveland and Berthitt Schools. So let me read about their nomination. The Bohemian Foundation is committed to working with our fellow community members on the care and improvement of our local, national, and global communities. We are fortunate enough to work with the Bohemian Foundation within our GiveNext programming, which is now in all of Thompson's middle and high schools. The Bohemian Foundation provides the connection between donors and schools with $5,000 grants. These are the grants that each of our secondary schools use to support our community through GiveNext. Through GiveNext and the Bohemian Foundation, our students are able to participate in the grant-making process and award local community organizations over $60,000 in funding to address issues concerning education, the arts, health, the environment, and economic stability in our community. Not only do they support the funding for our GiveNext program, but they are teaching our students what it means to have a voice in our community and that even at a young age, they can make a difference that can impact in someone else's life. We are so incredibly grateful for the work of the Bohemian Foundation and all they do to support the GiveNext program and our students in the Thompson School District. We thank you. Now, without further ado, I'd like to invite Sarah Rasmussen, who is our Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And Sarah is going to introduce our school of our evening.
Thank you. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I'm Sarah Rasmussen, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And this evening, I have the pleasure of introducing Berthitt Elementary. And Jessica Horvath is here with her fifth-grade representatives. And they're going to spend a little time this evening explaining a project that they've been working on as a class.
Hi, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, board, members of the board. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm here with five representatives from our fifth-grade class. And we are so excited. These kids are really excited to share the work they've been doing with problem-based learning. They've got ideas, they've got some potential solutions they'd like to share with you around a problem we've been working on, which was rooted in our SEL, our social-emotional learning curriculum. We are piloting a new curriculum this year at our school called Character Strong. We are loving it. I think we're all enjoying the curriculum. And the first strand that we were working on was kindness and respect. Those were the character traits we were focusing on for the first month or so of school. So in conjunction with the kindness and respect of the Character Strong curriculum, we also found a really cool Otter Cares Design Thinking Challenge. If you're not familiar, Otter Cares is a local philanthropic education group. And the design thinking challenge was around kindness as well. So they really integrated very well. And we also, it just lent itself perfectly to problem-based learning. So we're big proponents in the fifth grade at Berthitt Elementary for problem-based learning. It's just super engaging. It's meaningful for the kids. They're able to make real-world connections. It's rigorous. We just, we found it's been a really great strategy for learning. So with the Otter Cares and the social-emotional learning curriculum, we wrapped ourselves around the problem, how can we increase kindness in our schools? And these kids have some great ideas to share with you. This is one of several problem-based learning activities we're gonna do this year. We started some last year. We worked with the mayor on finding some, we were working on businesses. And additionally, we worked with Northern Water on finding solutions to the water shortage, potentially here in Berthitt and Loveland. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you. We've got Easton Olivas and Marlo Carrick, Kinley Jones, Zachary Obendorf, and Chloe Trainer. And they're gonna share some information on problem-based learning.
Good evening, Dr. Schaefer and board. My name is Easton Olivas. I am from the Publicity or Public Relations Team. And we took some steps to get where we are today. Our first step was that we defined the problem. And the problem that there wasn't enough kindness in our school. And we're gonna use some more steps to help with that. Our second step was we empathized. So we thought about how kids feel whenever they get told something or something happens at the school. Our third problem was we ideated. So we brainstormed ideas for the problems. And we split up into five committees. And they will tell you about their jobs too. Our fourth step was a prototype. So kids shared their prototypes with each other. And they made as best as they could for you today. Our fifth step was a test. So we presented in front of school leaders, like the principal and the counselor. And we got feedback to build off their ideas too. We also thought about having an assembly, a kickoff kindness assembly, about telling kids like what we're doing and how we're trying to spread more kindness. Our school earned a big poster to give recommendations to professionals. And they were gonna like draw and type on there. And we're gonna hang it in our cafeteria. And speaking of kind things, I'm gonna pass it on to Marlo.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Marlo Carrick. I am on the Kindness Quotes team of this kindness campaign. Our goal is basically to spread kindness by sharing a quote over the intercom about kindness or, yeah. We plan for intermediate grades to announce these quotes. It will kind of change throughout the grades of which students get to do it. Although preschool to second grade sadly cannot announce, they can submit quotes on a Google Sheet to me and the rest of my team via email. We hope that allowing students to pick out their own quotes will increase their listening and hoping for like the quote they picked out. And speaking of announcements in the intercom, I will pass over the podium to one of my teammates, Kinley. She's gonna be talking about Kindness Jar.
Hello, my name is Kinley. And I'm with the Kindness Jar Committee. Our whole goal is to increase kindness in the school by making up ideas for kindness actions. For example, every Monday morning, Ms. Becca will announce one on the announcements. And we have to do it at least once or twice that week. And to come up with more ideas, we're gonna make an online folder that all intermediate grades can make ideas and put them on that sheet that they have not heard before. They will submit it to me and the rest of my team. And we'll get them printed, laminated, so we can get tons of ideas, more than we have had ever before. So... If they do so, then they can earn a kindness card. Speaking of kindness cards, I'm gonna pass it on to my teammate Zachary.
Hello. Hello, my name is Zachary. And I'm with the Kindness Card Committee. We created kindness cards to motivate kindness throughout the school. We will give out kindness cards for acts of kindness that are above and beyond. And every two weeks, we will have rewards such as Spirit Week, extra recesses, and lunch with the principal every month or so. Another reward we would do is we would have a trophy for the most kindness cards earned for a class and a goal earned for the entire school by the end of the year. And we would only give it out where they did to school, not at home, because then they'll be giving out too many kindness cards. And I'd like to pass it on to Chloe Trainer.
Hello, my name is Chloe Trainer. And I am a member of the New Students Committee. Our goal is to make new students adjust more and fastly to their environment. Our problem is that sometimes new students don't adjust as fastly because some kids aren't giving them the respect that they deserve. So we came up with five ideas to resolve this. Our first idea is Goodie Bag. Whenever the new students get here, we will hand them a goodie bag. And inside of the goodie bag will be a pen, a pencil, a little card, a home folder, and a BES t-shirt. In front of the bag, on a little piece of paper, will be all the specials teachers' names that they will need to know. Our second idea was called Friend. Whenever the new students get here, if they feel comfortable with it, there will be two people in their class that will be the first people to invite them to sit with them at lunch and play with them at recess. Our third idea is called Tour. Tour is basically whenever we show the kids around the school and show them all the classrooms that they need to know. Our fourth idea is called Training. Training is whenever we go to different classrooms as a group and we tell them about the New Students Committee. And we ask if they have any adjustments that they want to make to the goodie bag. Our last but not least is Younger Siblings. Whenever younger, I mean, whenever new students get here, if they have younger siblings and they wanna check on them at any point, we will let them check on them once a day so they could just see if they are adjusting while making any good friends. Thank you so much for your time, board. We would love to know if you have any questions or feedback that you would like to give us.
I just have a comment about your, what you just spoke about, is it Chloe?
Yeah.
We are actually talking about that as a board, how to orient and make new board members feel welcome. So we might have to get goodie bags and t-shirts and stuff like that. So I really, I mean, we can use some of your really good ideas. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Not a question, but a comment. I wonder, do you guys do workshops for adults? It sounds to me like the things that you're working on and that you have figured out are things that our adult society probably need to know about. So if you're not already doing that, think about it.
I was gonna add to that, which is that your public speaking skills are on fire. I don't know how much you practiced, but very few adults get up in front of this microphone and the lights and all that and do as well as you all did. So great work.
Thank you.
I have one. I just wanted to comment, I love the welcome the new students. As someone as a child, who, my parents moved us around a lot, so it was always awkward being the new student, not knowing anybody. So I always just kinda, you know, hid away. And so I think what you guys are doing is really great because it prevents somebody from feeling isolated and actually goes along with our inclusiveness. And I think it's really great. So, well done.
Were there any other questions? I can't see all the way down. That's okay.
All right, we will move on to our board committee reports. And I ask that the board, board, share about committees that they're serving on or any event that they went to that really just kinda stood out for them. So I'm gonna start with, we're gonna do random selection tonight. And I'm gonna begin with Amy.
Okay. Tonight, I will be sharing my experiences with the Lago Vista community. I chose this because the Lago Vista community is a prime example of growing and supporting a community from the ground up. A little history on the Lago Vista community. It is a mobile home neighborhood in our district. And the schools for the neighborhood are Cottonwood Plains Elementary School, Lucille Irwin Middle School, and Loveland High School. In 2010, Laney Howard and other teachers from Cottonwood Plains Elementary School began providing after-school homework help to students living in the Lago Vista community. This turned into a summer program staffed by Laney Howard and her spouse Duncan and other teachers. In 2011, Faith Church purchased and renovated a trailer for the programming. And then in 2012, Laney and Duncan Howard actually moved in to a modular home in the Lago Vista Park to foster more connections and relationships with the students and families that they were serving. The community partnerships with Lago Vista have grown over the years. Partnerships are many local churches, agencies, and businesses. There are programs for youth during the school year and summer. The programs focus on continued academic support, arts, recreation, leadership, and faith. Thompson School District is one of the partners with Lago Vista. Thompson School District provided Lago Vista with two modulators, with classrooms and bathrooms. Thompson School District works with the Lago Vista community to provide academic support to students K through 12. One program that TSD hosts are weekly classes, a weekly class called Graduation and Beyond, which encourages high school students to graduate high school. Thompson supports students with academics, credit recovery, career training, and scholarship support. Last year, there were 10 students from Lago Vista who graduated from high school. I just think that's phenomenal. I couldn't be prouder to be a guest at the recent Lago Vista Neighborhood Community Event that was held on October 12th. It was a community event from all partner agencies. And it was all things Lago Vista. There was great food, entertainment from youth, silent auction, stories of success. As an elected board member, going into communities for connection has been a goal of mine. I've been fortunate to attend the last three forums at the Lago Vista Neighborhood. I've been fortunate to attend the last three forms at the Lago Vista Neighborhood. The last one was held on October 16th. It's been exciting and an honor to connect and dialogue with our neighbors and I know that the strong partnership between Lago Vista and Thompson will just continue to grow.
Thank you, Amy. Let's see where we are. Let's see, let's have Nancy, why don't you go next?
I don't really, I don't want to repeat the Lago Vista, but I do enjoy going to Lago Vista. I also went to the benefit dinner and it was just, it was just really nice to see the partnership that was, has been developed there as well as listening to the kids talk about how they are able to grow in their faith and then find a way to use that to stay in to school and excel. There was also this young man, Alex Miranda, and he is a 10th grader at Loveland High School. He was dressed just to the, I mean, just to the T, he had a red suit coat on and he sang two songs in Spanish that were just, it was perfect. And so again, I like going out in the community as well. I also think some of the meetings where they've started, we have the staff meetings now before our study session is also another good way to get out into the staff community and that I've also found really enjoyable and meaningful, just talking to the staff and finding out how they're doing and meeting them. And at the last one, there was the cutest little baby girl. She was adorable. But that's my board report.
Okay, Dawn? We're going random.
Okay. So coincidentally, it really was my plan to talk about this the whole time, on October 10th was Give Next Kickoff Day.
Did you go good?
Yeah, so all of us were invited to that and I got, I did get to go because I was presenting, wearing another hat. And so it was nice to get to see Stu there. I think he was the only one who was able to make it from this group. He was the only person I saw from the board. But what was absolutely amazing to me in that was walking into the, to the ballroom and seeing before any of the kids got there, all the tables that were set up because it is literally every school in Laramie County and so there's a lot of people there. And before everyone came in and all the kids were there, it was just really cool to get to see all of the, all of the things that they had done to set it up and to make it so that students could get to meet so many nonprofits and also get to learn in depth about challenges that are happening in our community and the solutions that exist from nonprofits. But my favorite part, because I'm a, you know, it's my favorite, was seeing that Ferguson had two tables. There were other schools that had two, three, four tables from Thompson, but to see Ferguson go from not participating a couple of years ago to having two full tables was really exciting. Just to know that, that we're seeing that happen with many of our schools and to get to talk with the students and find out what they were excited about was really great.
Thank you. Pam?
Sure. Lots of good stuff going on in the district. Quickly, let's see, Dr. Schaefer, Dawn Kirk, and I attended the Loveland Community Kitchen breakfast and Loveland Community Kitchen is a good partner. Grace Upon Grace was there, some other important community partners that we work with and the kitchen provides meals for families, students, anyone in the community who is experiencing hunger. So no forms to fill out, you can just go for one meal or 10 meals or for 10 weeks. So shout out to Loveland Community Kitchen, helping feed our community. Secondly, today was my, I think my last day of visiting schools for my 10 years on the board. So it was a very special day and Dr. Schaefer and I visited Centennial Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, Padres Elementary, Lucille Irwin Middle School, Ferguson High School, and Thompson Career Center. So the elementary schools are, of course, they're, they're just so fun because the kids are hilarious and they'll tell you anything and really funny things. In every school, we saw learning targets, we saw our new curriculum being used, which is super exciting, in math and English language arts. So that was very exciting. Lucille Irwin Middle School, I think the highlight there for me was a combined geometry-algebra class. And so these are for like eighth grade students who could technically be going up to the high school to take math classes, but they figured out a way to teach them at Lucille Irwin so they don't have to travel. And that was, that was very, I think, a great collaboration. And then finally, Ferguson High School and Thompson Career Center. Thompson Career Center, we visited the Certified Nursing Assistant classes and that's always amazing to see all the mannequins and the hospital beds and these kids are learning these skills to go into, to begin their nursing careers right here from our district in conjunction with Front Range. We also visited the Construction Trades Class where it's Plumbing Week or I don't know how long they're studying, but they were having a contest to deconstruct toilets. So that was really funny to watch them try to take away toilets and time, time at a contest. But the highlight, I think, at Thompson Career Campus was the Manufacturing Class where they're learning, we just purchased a new engineering software program for these students called SolidWorks. My daughter, who's an engineering major at college, and she said SolidWorks is the standard out in the engineering and manufacturing world. And so these kids are starting to learn this program. By the end of the school year, if they can get their certification in SolidWorks, they will be able to apply for jobs that are making $60,000 and above. So this is a huge step for our kids at Thompson Career Campus. They were very excited to get going on this new software programming and I, I think that this is, these are the sort of skills that we're really excited to be able to teach them. So that was, it was our day.
Thank you, Pam. Alexandra?
So my life this time of year is pretty much consumed by band, so...
That's why I was hoping we were going to hear about that.
Well, I wanted to read something about another mom actually wrote about the band, but there's no way I'd be able to make it through reading it. So I'm not going to talk about that. Instead, I'll talk about the other thing I've been doing that isn't banned is attending the Calendar Committee meetings, which has been really, really fascinating. It, as I think you guys know, the committee meets every two years to plan the calendar for the next two years. And we've met, we have one more meeting, so we've met maybe six times and we have one more meeting and including creating and sending out a community survey about calendar preferences and sort of asking some questions. And it's been really interesting to learn sort of about the process and it's a great sort of big puzzle to put all together and figure out how to make it work and get the days that we need and trying to plan for all the, all the different requirements of the calendar. And so I've definitely enjoyed it and I look forward to seeing what we come up with next week. We have a couple of interesting options and then it'll be presented to all of us in a couple of weeks to see what's in store.
Stu?
I'm going to begin by just filling in a couple of things about the Give Next celebration that I attended that Dawn was also in attendance for. All five of our high schools had students in attendance, all four middle schools as well as High Plains, Riverview, and Peakview. I had the opportunity to hear the keynote speaker, to attend a couple of workshops. And while the kids were eating, they were sitting at individual tables by school and so I just kind of buzzed around from table to table to say hello to them, to tell them how proud I was of them for being part of Give Next, which is such an impressive and important program. Also want to talk to you about another opportunity I had to hang out with kids and their families. Last Thursday night, I went to the Annual Family Night at Stansberry Early Childhood. I was able to visit with some preschoolers and their parents as they moved around from room to room to make crafts associated with this year's theme, which was Social Emotional Learning, or SEL. They were expecting about 300 parents in total to attend the event. And I'm not going to take the time now, but at some point, I'd love to be able to tell you about a conversation I had with a mom who was there. They invited me to stay for pizza and so I sat down at a table and a mom with several kids in tow sat down and we began talking. She told me that she was the mother of 11 children and she was so impressed with what was going on in the Thompson School District's Early Childhood Program. As I said, I'd love to tell you about that conversation, but I'm not going to take time from the group or from the meeting to do that. So that's what I have, pardon.
Thank you, Stu. I sort of had deja vu to COVID time because I've been sort of homebound the past month or they're close to it, three weeks. So I've done a lot of virtual meetings, but I also have had to beg off on several of the events that everybody was going to. So I've listened tonight and I know what I've missed and I look forward to next year being able to be back out there and doing those kinds of things. So that ends, because we do not have any, oh, no, no, we have to do this part first. We have public comment first.
That's right.
Okay. Go ahead. Stu, you want to read your little blurb?
All right, here we go. Because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Each individual will only be recognized once. There's a large number of speakers. The board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topic related to the board's conduct of the school. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in executive session.
Thank you, Stu. Dawn?
So you have three minutes. I'm using my timer, but I remembered that I needed to do that. So I'll give you a signal at 30 seconds, just to let you know to wrap up. Our first and only speaker is Leah Johnson.
I couldn't tell who that was sitting out there in the dark.
I think some kids were speaking there before. Hi, good evening. Leah Johnson, I live in Loveland and my children attend Truska Elementary School. Thank you so much for your service. I know it's a thankless job and it's noted and Pam, thank you for your years and years of service to this district. It certainly is notable and appreciated. But I'm actually here tonight to celebrate Truska Elementary School because it is an amazing place and I am a proud public school parent who sends my first grader and my fourth grader there every day to learn from the magical educators that are there. And it is, I get emotional, I feel so blessed to be able to send my children to a school that I know they're safe and they're learning and they're developing both educational and emotional and social skills and all of the things that really truly round out a child and make them whole. And I just, I am so grateful. And, but not only that, the numbers are there at Truska to prove how awesome it is. In the last year on the state test, Truska jumped 20 points. And as a member of the SAC for the last five years, I cannot express how excited we are and how proud of our staff we are and how amazing they are. Because the amazing thing about that is now we're at exceeds in academic growth. As you know, Truska is a dual immersion school, so our children are being taught in English and Spanish. Our minority students are excelling and by fifth grade, they are high performing in both English and Spanish. And not to mention, they're performing well on tests that they're taking in English and being instructed in Spanish. So just all awesome and very cool. And I just had to come and make sure that everyone in the district knows how amazing Truska is, how amazing our educators are there, and just how much the staff goes above and beyond. And I wouldn't be me if I didn't like add the advocating for things that we need at the end. But you know, I appreciate the continued enrollment effort. I know that's a challenge, just given our geographic location and the district did a really great job this year and I appreciate that. But continuing that, I do think the newcomers program is something that this district still needs to look at, sending those kids who are native Spanish speakers to Truska in the south of the district. I think that helps those families and, and, and the district. And you know, the equitable funding issue that I know I've spoken to many of you about and how it really impacts our children because other schools, PTOs can raise more money and they get those extra academic and experiences that our kids don't. But all that to say, we're still thriving and doing amazing things and, and I cannot thank the educators at Truska enough for the work and the passion that they give to my children every day. So thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Anybody else? That was it?
Do we have any call-ins?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment for tonight and we will move on to action consent items. And these are items that we have presented to us at a previous meeting or study session and involve items that just need to be approved. So are there any items that board members wish to speak to? Can't see clear down there, so we're going to move on. Okay, I will read off each item and we'll vote on them as a full group. And Pam is going to read the proclamation for our classified staff and we'll do that, why don't we do that now, Pam? Would you like to?
Sure. Okay. Proclamation for Classified Staff Appreciation Week. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, our state, country, and world. And whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students. And whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Thompson School District Board of Education proclaims October 16th through 20th, 2023 to be Classified Staff Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Thompson School District Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance, recognizing the dedication and the hard work of these individuals. Adopted this 18th day of October.
Thank you, Pam. All right, the action consent items are 5.1, approval of personnel, extra duty, and coaching recommendations. 5.2, approval of expenditures over $50,000. 5.3, approval of intergovernmental agreements, Laramie County Sheriff's Office, Loveland Police Department, and Johnstown Police Department. 5.4, approval of bond-related contracts and associated project bond. Does that come out right?
I think it's approval of bond-related contingency projects.
Okay. And 5.5, approval of the Classified Staff Appreciation Week proclamation for that, that was this week. So if there, if there would be a motion for approval of these?
So moved.
Thank you, Dawn?
Second.
Was that Alexandra again?
Thank you.
So it was Dawn and Alexandra. So Laura Lee, will you please call the role on our action consent items?
Stu Boyd?
Aye.
Amy Doran?
Aye.
Dawn Kirk?
Aye.
Oops, Pam, sorry. Pam Howard?
Aye.
Dawn Kirk?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
And Alexandra Lessum?
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we will be moving on into our, there are no discussion action items at this point, so into our discussion items, which would be 7.1, the CIBAC update.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Picone, Chief Operations Officer. Tonight, like we do twice a year, if not more, our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee will provide an update on our 2018 bond. So I will introduce our, he's actually now our chair and co-chair, they can be here tonight, but a member that was so excited to volunteer is presenting tonight, Brennan Willetts. He'll present the summary of what the community's been doing. But before I hand over to Brennan, I just want to again give CIBAC a shout out of thank you. They spend quite a bit of their own time outside of work hours, out, you know, after hours, just really diving into and looking at our bond expenditures, the proceeds we're spending, and all the process and accounting we go through the bond. So just a shout out to that entire group because it, it's been in existence now for five years and as we're coming to an end, yeah, just thank you for all the work they put into it. So here is Brennan.
I'm going to make some horrendous noise.
I'm going to make some horrendous noise.
There. Good job.
I'm petite. I need to be a little taller. Thank you very much, Dr. Schaefer, Board of Education. I appreciate your time. Again, my name is Brendan Willetts. I am a member. I pass on my apologies from the Chair and Vice Chair who could not be here this evening. But I hope to answer any questions. Forgive me. I will have to look down at my cheat sheet. I'm used to looking at my slides for notes, so. But I really do want to say a heartfelt thank you for the time and energy and effort that the Board of Education and the Thompson School District staff put into everything. It is, it's really greatly appreciated and it's rewarding as a CIBOC member to see how those dollars, the taxpayer dollars, my taxpayer dollars are being spent and ensure they are being spent in the best way possible and good stewardship is a high priority. So I'll provide a quick overview of the CIBOC and update on the activities, which is going to be pretty short. We are coming to the end of CIBOC. And the recommendation that CIBOC recently made, which you just passed, so we appreciate that that, the remaining funds are going to be spent. Please feel free to ask any questions or clarity as I go, as I will entertain those as we go. The second slide, the purpose and structure, I'm not going to read every slide. I know it's entertaining. But I just want to say thank you for having the CIBOC. It's been a pleasure to sit on the Oversight Committee. And I hope that if and when the board approves another bond, that you continue to have an Oversight Committee. I think it's a great way for citizens to be involved and to ensure that taxpayer dollars are being spent in the best possible way. I really want to say thank you to the operations and construction staff. We ask a lot of questions. We ask a lot of detailed questions. We're data people. We love seeing the pictures. We love going on the tours. But we really want to say thank you to the operations and construction staff. They have been phenomenal. They have entertained every question we have asked. Even if some of the slides did get a little messy with numbers, they have been phenomenal and have answered every single question we've asked. So I wanted to say thank you to that. The next slide is the membership. I just, I really appreciate that we have 16 different members. We've always had a quorum. They have been dedicated. I have missed some. We have all missed some, but we've always managed to have a quorum. And I think it's really important to the public to note that we all come from different backgrounds. We have different geographies. And we collectively ask what we consider as very good questions, but we have such diverse backgrounds that we really get to the heart of things. And and we really appreciate that it is made up of of different groups of people from different geographies and different financial backgrounds, construction backgrounds. Makes for an entertaining conversation. The next slide, the operations staff updates. Really, I can't, I can't emphasize enough how great it is to have an operations staff and a construction staff who entertain our questions and when we want to get down into the details of a very specific expenditure, they have provided that. It goes far beyond the construction that Todd and Tammy provide in their updates to the board. We dig far deeper into that and I just really appreciate that they review the timelines and the before and after pics are great, but those are, you know, selling points. We want to dig into the data and look at every penny. And they've always been answered. They've always been addressed. And they've always been addressed, most importantly, to the satisfaction of the CIBOC. We've never been left wanting and thinking that maybe something was amiss or awry. So the community should have great faith in the stewardship of taxpayer dollars by T S D. The next slide, the funding summary. You know, people think of the bond and and those who are unfamiliar with it, really, it's it's just one big pot of money, but there are various pots of money. I know Gordon and his staff do a phenomenal job with the premium and interest. But I really want to address the grants. The grants are a way to expand the bond dollars. It takes a lot of hard work of staff and that takes leadership that allows staff to go out and do that. Really, the, you know, what is that, $15 million in grants? That's money that not every district gets. That's not money that is just handed out. There's a lot of work into that. There's a lot of accounting that goes into that. So I really want to say thank you to the board and thank you to leadership for allowing staff that privilege of going out there and seeking dollars and really maximizing the dollars that we spend. The assets, I want to say thank you to the board. That takes a lot of staff coordination, but it takes a recommendation and the board must make action on all real property matters. And so to determine that it's best interest to divest yourselves of that interest is is phenomenal from a taxpayer's perspective. So thank you for that, using your 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 control and authority over those assets and determining when it's best to divest yourself of those assets. Cash flow, at the end of the bond, this is really easy. There's not much left on the slide. We're pretty much done and you guys just allocated the the final dollar, so really I'll I'll skip beyond that. The next slide, the summer projects. It's phenomenal to see that great push at the end, all the little projects and some bigger projects. But it takes a lot of effort. Those project managers are working hard every day. Again, you know, those are wrapping up. There's a few left, which will take us to the reconciliation summary. You know, what what stands out to me, you know, it's great to see charts and graphs and I love data, but really what stands out is there was still savings from every region of the bond expenditure plan. That takes great management of the bond. It takes a lot of long hours. I'm sure Todd and his crew have spent long hours. But you know, really the savings despite COVID, despite the supply chain shortage that everyone hears about. Those are real. I know that in my professional life. And so to show savings even in spite of all of the challenges presented, it speaks volumes to your staff and the leadership you have. The remaining project slide, you know, the 1,059 original items, there's 14 left. They're all fairly small. The CIBOC did review and recommend the contingency projects for give or take 6.6 million. You just passed that. I'm happy to see that. I think those projects will really help kind of put a bow on on what is a great bond and I hope that leads to another successful bond and taxpayers seeing that the dollars are spent extraordinarily well. Every dollar's tracked and hopefully that leads to another successful bond if if the board so chooses in the future. Really, next step slide, we are wrapping up. There's probably one more presentation of CIBOC and and we are simply monitoring, the summer projects are over. We'll continue to monitor and get updates of the contingency projects. You know, the the decimal dust, as I call it, at the end of something of this magnitude, it takes a lot of work to wrap that up. That last 5% really, it it takes a lot of effort and staff dedication. So you know, I would just encourage you, if the board chooses to go for another bond, that you continue to have a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I think it's extraordinarily valuable. And the last slide technically is my appreciation slide. The CIBOC wanted to just extend our gratitude once again. Thank you. I really want to thank all the staff at the schools, especially during Classified Week. There's a lot of staff out there doing a lot of really hard and really great work. And it's not just the operations and construction folks, which is our purview, but I also know from living in the district, I'll take off my CIBOC hat and put on my parent. Two kids at Mountain View, go Lions. One through Mountain View onto college and someone who has lived in the boundary for 16 years and been an advocate for the school district as a parent, as a taxpayer, thank you very much. And taxpayers should know that the operations staff, the construction staff do a phenomenal job and they are extraordinary stewards of our taxpayer dollars. People should be confident in how we spend our money. With that, I'd entertain any questions or get out of your hair?
We just appreciate the fact that we have people like you on the committee and working with us and guiding with those questions that force answers to put everybody at ease in our community. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Are there questions or comments? Okay, let's start. I can't clear down at the end. Okay, we'll start with, I didn't see any hands down there.
I just would add to this that it's really, you guys did a phenomenal job. We also got really lucky just with the timing and the market and the rates. And so I can't see where Gordon is out there somewhere, but you know, good job on leveraging that, those extra dollars and the extra earnings. And I agree with you that when there's an Oversight Committee such as this, it does give the citizens a lot more confidence in how the money's going to be spent. And so I absolutely hope that we continue doing this CIBOC Committee because I think it has a lot of value. But thank you for your job.
Amy?
I'm Sabrina. Thank you to you and everyone on CIBOC for your service. You know, and I just think that it's important to note that, you know, we're transparent. You know, that there's no, no funny business with, you know, the the dollars, the the money, the anything. It's all right here. And so by having the citizens, you know, from the community, I think that that is just a thank you for for saying that as an outside because I can say it all, all that, you know, till I'm blue in the face. But to have, you know, an outsider, you know, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, I appreciate your your time and your service. So thank you.
And Stu, I saw your hand puff up.
Yeah. Ditto, first of all, Brendan, on the words of appreciation for you and other members of the committee. But I think I'm going to learn something from the answer to the question that I'm going to ask. And I don't think you have to look, look at the slide. If you don't know what this is, I'm sure somebody does. Slide seven talks about something called a gaga pit. I'm curious as to what a gaga pit is, that part of the bond issue.
Regrettably, I learned the same thing about two years ago, but I'll let Todd accept. I I don't know the rules, but I know I've watched it and I feel old when I watch it because the rules escaped me for a bit. It's a, it's a octagonal or round-ish pit and they throw the ball. And truly, I don't know what the purpose is, but I know it's great exercise and they are really excited to do it.
Who is doing it?
The elementary school, physically. It's probably a 12-foot, 15- Todd, help me out here. Save me. You owe me a lunch for this.
Well, I have not played it, but it is about a three-foot-high walled-in octagon. And in essence, it's like a dodgeball on an enclosed area. And there is a lot of rules. I don't know the rules either, but they're very, it's a very popular game right now at all of our elementary schools. It's what everyone's looking to add.
Gaga pit.
Gaga pit, yeah. And I don't know where the name came from. It sounds like something, Barb, that the board should think about doing as part of bonding activity.
Yeah, as soon as my knee is-
Yeah, as soon as your knee is regre-
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to point out that it's a good thing we voted for the contingency plan because that really would have changed everything on the fly for you if we had-
Yeah, I would have had to pivot a little bit there on the the end. Actually, it would just have been a full court press of encouraging you to do it because we went over it at length, spent an hour talking about it. And and we, we all believe, passed unanimously on both items that we were asked to vote on. So it would have just been me pressing you for making a different decision.
And that's what I appreciate is that you have, you and everyone else has served as that like sounding board for the things that that were, you know, that needed some different sets of eyes on things. And so thank you for doing that over and over again, including on this, because it was easy to say yes to.
Thank you very, very much.
Have a nice evening.
Okay, you too. All right, 7.2 is the McKinney-Vento update.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Chief Academic Officer. Tonight we present to you an update on the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. We, we have hundreds of students in the Thompson School District who are experiencing homelessness. And thankfully, this is a federal act that has provided opportunities for us to remove the barriers so that these students can experience an appropriate public education. Here tonight to give you an update on that is Mr. Jesse T. Herina. He is our Director of Federal and State Programs. And I'm going to let him take it away and be able to share with you some of these things that we are able to do for the kiddos who are experiencing this in Thompson School District. Jesse?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the of the school board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with you all to discuss some of the work that takes place kind of behind the scenes, right? So I'll go ahead and begin with that first slide around supporting highly mobile students. The connection to Strive 2025, as you can see, 1.1, 2.2, and 2.3. And essentially, these are areas in which are essential to the work that we do for students that are oftentimes underrepresented when it looks at the disparities that are taking place, not only academically, but among the homes and the access to things like, simple things that sometimes we think of just are commonplace, transportation, basic needs, hygiene. 2.2, that's the work that I think as a collective, we do a great job around really looking at culturally responsive practices and how they apply to the way we set and create spaces of safeness for students that their circumstances are are quite heavy. When you're looking at, thinking about the lack of nighttime fixed residence, living doubled up, living in concentrated poverty is really difficult. 2.3, ensure that effective two-way communication with family, students, and community. This is also essential to really play intentional focuses because I think about our team of the federal programs, state and federal programs team that includes our liaisons and our specialists. Highly mobile youth require highly mobile folks. And I appreciate the courage that they have and their willingness because it is, it is a very highly mobile type of support that we are giving. Onto the next slide is essentially the McKinney-Vento Assistance Act that really provides us really with the law of what it is to be identified, but also how it applies to truly remove the educational barriers when it comes to immediate enrollment. As you know, when a student is experiencing some form of out-of-home placement, they may not have the student records accessible immediately that are oftentimes required in registration. So because of the program and because of the identification, we can work with the students and their caregivers or their guardians and their families to align as best we could the needs that we have at the school level until we receive the the records. Next slide, again, some more about the federal law, some more about the technical policy, which in many ways is a great way to raise awareness around, these are things that are non, how do you say that? They're non-negotiable, right? If you're identified, you are going to get access, supports, and services that are authentically aligned with the work that needs to take place to address any barriers. And continue on with the definitions of highly mobile and McKinney-Vento. Now, that's a large umbrella. But it's very important that we have knowledge and accurately define the different student groups that exist under the highly mobile umbrella, whether it's migrant, whether it's foster, whether it's McKinney, whether it's unaccompanied youth, whether it's kinship. And the reason being is that although they all live under the highly mobile umbrella, they all receive aligned needs that are different. You know, homeless list looks different. Immediately, we can imagine what homeless list looks like. We might think, well, it's in a car. It's in a motel. But also with so many other things around just having that doubled up, having that domestic violence issue arise where immediately you have found yourself under an out-of-home placement. We've seen a lot of the impacts still lingering as a result of COVID and evictions and loss of jobs and increase of any of the inflation that takes place within just our community essentially by nature. Again, as we go into the next slide, it just further identification eligibility information of what it looks like, of what fixed means, of what regular means, of what adequate means. Our liaisons and our specialists do a lot of work by utilizing contact people at each of our schools to really make sure that we are referring, identifying, also in in partnership with some of our active organizations that are community capital, that we are also sharing that knowledge among each other. That way, we are immediately identifying students and families as quickly as possible to put them in some type of housing, whether it's a short-term stay at a hotel or connecting to other services that might apply. These are again, some of the rights as you see on that next slide around immediate enrollment, transportation around school of origin and receiving school, of course, free meals, wave of school fees. As we know, research will tell us that connectedness and student engagement is a very good indicator of the success a child's going to have in school. So to ensure, you know, I always think about the questions that I ask students and families as I engage folks that are being identified. You know, children are children and they have great hearts and sometimes they may not even bring to light to their families that they want to be a part of a club or a part of a sport, knowing that there's cost in shoes, there's cost in gear, there's cost in backpacks. So the information that our contacts and our counselors and our folks and our social workers share is that, listen, we can take care of that. And we're going to make sure that you have access to what is equitable among other team members or group members of that club. These are things that we can provide, whether emergent or just in provisions to ensure that they are connected to the school. to ensure that they are connected to the school. As I mentioned, extracurricular activities. As we go into the next slide, TS Federal Programs, this is some of the stuff that takes place within the system here at TSD, the federal education programs. So there are some grants that have been aligned, as with the second bullet around federal COVID relief programs such as HCY, which was additional funding to really address some of the needs around maybe short-term stay. And what was great about these dollars is that they were different allowances that had been typical in the state and federal level because they understood that there were certain emergent needs that were going to arise because of evictions, because of COVID. So this has been great to offer mattresses, to offer short-term stays, to offer food, to offer crock pots, to offer modes of transportation, a lot of different things that apply. And of course, this comes through the Family, Community, and Engagement Programs that exist through the Family Center, through the FSCP Program, through some of the work that's funded through the Title I Set Aside that includes homeless set aside and family engagement. And of course, the next program is around the Educational Stability, which really looks on targeting and intentionally supporting foster youth, migrant youth, and homeless, so McKinney youth. In addition to that, we understand that there may not be a particular program around refugee youth because of numbers. However, they definitely have access to the needs and the services that are applicable because they sometimes are experiencing the same circumstances. Onto the next. So this is the team, right? And I love that, I've been here for a few months now, and, you know, they've embraced me and they've been able to partner. And what's really telling about that is that that is like a common understanding of the vibe that's taking place, that us as stakeholders are all in there with our true agenda, truly creating access, supports, and opportunity for the youth that we have been enlisted to serve. And they do a great job. Erica Woolridge is the one that essentially oversees the liaisons and the specialists and the contacts and develops capacity at the school level. And she's always doing like these school tours to make sure that our folks know exactly what it looks like to refer, to identify, and to assist in any wraparound services that we can provide. This is some data from the 22-23 school year. As you can see, last year, 775 students were identified as McKinney. Of those, we had 75 foster youth, we had 17 migrant youth, and 69 unaccompanied youth. The numbers in the blue are our current numbers now. As you can see already with the identification of McKinney-Vento, we are at 546. So that's very telling of what's going on, not only here at TSD, but at the nation. You know, I was looking at some research of what is the impacts of living and navigating spaces of concentrated poverty. And when I think about just literacy in general and the importance of milestones and the importance of having reinforcement in the home, some areas of concentrated poverty do have a lack of access to books. For every 300 children living in poverty, they have access to one age-appropriate book as compared to middle-income families who have 13-to-1 ratio. So essentially, what that's telling us is that in our country, around 61% of our students that are living in poverty have limited to no access to an age-appropriate book. So I think about the supports that community offers and ways to really help and support literacy and the things that we can do. So that's some of our data. As we go into the next slide, those are just essentially funding sources where we are able to access FTE, where we're able to access funding sources for emergent needs, short-term stays, and some of the stuff that I was speaking about that is that come with the services. So what applies here is going to be Title I of McKinney-Vento Set Aside, the McKinney-Vento Subgrant, which is a three-year cycle as well as a Title I cycle, but although those awards are annually through the Title I dollars. The Educational Stability Grant, as I said, that's our ESG grant that really focuses on foster, migrant, and homelessness. And of course, what's been great to really discover here at TSD as a new member of the community is the support that we get from the Thompson Education Foundation. It's amazing. It really is. And it's not common. You know, I've had access to a couple of other districts prior to here, and the way the foundation supports our kids of the highest mobility is very unique and I'm so thankful for the work that they're doing. It's amazing. I really have to say how amazing that is. Some of the celebrations are the partnerships that we have with community organizations that are already actively addressing some of these needs, which include migrant BOCs, the Boys and Girls Club, of course YMCA faith-based partnerships also, and Kids Back, So Food Bank, and the needs that take place there. Staffing, of course, I've shared a little bit about our team. Those are some of the folks that we have to support our youth and really begin to develop capacity, but also, you know, make those connections among the community from school to school, but also the partnerships that exist that I've mentioned already. Some of the supports that are included in this work are, of course, the Family Center, Family and Community Engagement Team, the LD Department Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Team, and some of the work they've done around cultural responsiveness, the Positive Attentive Team, to really assure that there's an understanding that has some empathy and reciprocity when there is an unexcused absence that is associated with students, it's a highly mobile situation. Those circumstances sometimes are out of their control. So to ensure that they are not marked unexcused and that if they are unexcused, that we contact them and make sure that we can provide any services educationally, instructionally, and make sure that those absences are excused and they're offered the time that's equivalent to the time that they've been away from the school. You know, we don't want to create any more barriers that already exist naturally. As you move forward beyond the social workers and counselors, we have the community supports which really around housing and external needs that are much more emergent than our federal dollars allow us to use because of the allowances and other guidelines that are existing within those programs. And the challenges, although the challenges here that exist at TSD are going to be mentioned, they are not unique to TSD. They are nationwide. These are just challenges that we are encountering in highly mobile youth. And of course, it's lack of affordable housing, access to transportation, because there's some situations that we're going to want to have a child stay in their school of origin even though they've been displaced or put into another community and the other school is closer. However, if they've already made connections with adults and students there, we want to make sure there's stability because data will tell you that any child, regardless of stability, that has a transition within the school year can lose from six months to a year of learning, just because of the impact that it has them socially, emotionally, but also in the shifts of types of instruction that are being afforded within school to school to school. And now, the last slide. Does the Board have any questions for me?
Let's find out. Are there questions? Is that Alexander's hand that I saw or whose? I can't tell whose it is. It's really hard from here to down there, a long distance.
So I don't know if you have an answer for this, or Todd does, or maybe nobody does, but I was thinking about this and then you sort of mentioned it as far as the transportation thing, that, you know, we're struggling with our school buses and so on and so forth. So how is it addressed to ensure that these kids can, you know, go to the school that they need to be at when it's such a struggle transporting anybody these days?
So third-party transportation, right? So third-party transportation has been a definite option for us in Northern Colorado. Some of the issues that we run into through third-party transportation is also access to drivers. You know, we're not Denver Metro. Really raising awareness around public transit too, and supporting youth and maybe even possibly giving tours of what that looks like. And ultimately, transportation is a good job of working with our group, knowing that there are certain mandates that just you can't get out of, right? So being priority when it comes to that piece, being very creative. You know, when we are sharing students from different communities, like maybe it's Greeley and Thompson School District, having transportation work with each other and share some developed routes that are equitable to both. You know, the state also offers some funding sources when we do have to resort to third-party situations because those can be elevated in cost as well. But I think we do a great job considering the circumstances. You know, it takes a lot of patience, a lot of effort, but you'll find that the folks that are really supporting directly students that are highly mobile are knowing of this and their willingness is about as high as you can come.
Well, thank you. Dawn?
So this is sort of a bridge between this and the next one because they're related. So thank you for cutting us off partway through to make sure we pause. But I went to an event last spring, and one of the things that struck me in the data, and there's a lot, is that even once, even one time that a student moves in high school means that their graduation rate is cut more than half from their peers that don't move during high school. And that isn't factoring in all the other factors that might come with this set. This is just that fact alone. And so I'm grateful that we do all that we do to help minimize the impact of that, to make sure that, you know, we're meeting kids where, literally where they are as often as they need to. Colorado has a higher-than-average unhoused rate, and then Laramie County has an even higher unhoused rate. And there is a lot of intersectionality in the kids. They're not just one identity. About 20% of the kids are multilingual learners. About 20% are disabled. A little less than 2% are, a little over 1% is a migrant families as well. And so I just think that that's important for us to talk about because there's a reason that we're doing this work, and it's not optional. I mean, thank you for pointing out the obvious on why we are guided to do what we do. It's not just for those bleeding hearts like me who want to, but truly because we must. But also because if our mandate is to graduate kids and to have them be educated and to do well, then we must help them meet those needs. So thank you for all you're doing to come on board and help us work through that because it's a lot and I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Amy?
Thanks, Jesse. It's good to have you present. But just wanted to, just to point out that, you know, these kiddos, you know, personally, from my experience, you know, having both domestic foster children and then unaccompanied refugees, minor foster children. You know, Thompson School District has done a phenomenal job. The, you know, having one point of contact. And so for me, having these kiddos and working with the McKinney-Vento team has been, you know, just phenomenal. And these kids have experienced trauma, you know, domestic and the unaccompanied refugee minor children, trauma beyond belief. And we, these basic needs are being met, again, as Dawn pointed out, by a federal, you know, mandate. But these basic needs have to be met in order to be able to read, to do math. So these basic needs that, you know, we are able to provide through McKinney-Vento, you know, it's just phenomenal. So I just wanted to bring my personal experience. And I love what you said about the highly mobile students. They have to have a highly mobile team. And that's true. So the team is very adept at change and it's very highly competent staff. So, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you. No, they're amazing. They really are. And they're so knowledgeable around the law and the mandates, and they work with others with grace. So it's a beautiful thing.
Just a second, Nancy. Pam, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, Nancy. I'm sorry. We'd been going down there all along and I decided to switch it. So that's why. All right, Nancy.
I just have a few, and I think they should be simple. So the 775 is made up of the foster youth, migrant, unaccompanied youth, and refugee. That's all that one big number of 775, right?
So the 775 will be essentially just McKinney. So that includes folks that are living doubled up, folks that are unaccompanied youth. So it's everything minus foster and migrant.
Oh.
So foster and migrant is two different numbers.
Good evening, parents. Thank you for attending our fall parent teacher conference. We will be locking the doors and leaving home in five minutes.
We can't get out.
Just in recent years, I would say within the last five to seven years, there's been a shift. At one point in time, McKinney really encompassed all of them, including foster. However, recently, they began to really look intentionality around student groups. And that way, there's funding that could be directly tied with those particular groups. But that 775 is entirely McKinney youth.
So it includes the refugee, unaccompanied, and homeless youth, right?
It does not include refugee, it does not include migrant, it does not include foster.
Gotcha, okay.
But it'll include unaccompanied youth.
Okay. And how often do you update this number? It sounded like you already have an update for this year. I couldn't hear.
You know, we have a young lady, I'm sorry for saying that. She's a young lady. Jean, she is our data person, and she's amazing. And so she really does it daily, you know, because someone's being identified or referred on a daily basis, and there's such mobility that there's also youth leaving the district. So we have a weekly highly mobile meeting where we share those numbers with the team. I'll be sharing some numbers with Title I Principles tomorrow, for instance. However, I would say that these are daily numbers. So it's something that comes up on a daily basis.
And then my last question, which I find a little concerning, is you mentioned that there's dollar needs beyond what the federal government is providing for. And knowing that for this budget year, the federal and state grants have dropped, it concerns me a little bit. So is, at some point, could you do a presentation? Or if you know right now, what kind of needs, dollar needs, are we looking at that we need to provide for that go beyond the federal grants? Is it?
So when I think about certain needs, so that's what's really great about TEF here, is they really provide the funding for those emergent needs. So as long as that exists, we are good. When I think about federal funding needs, if that were to ever go to waste or if we were really looking at having a decline in transportation funding, then that would be something that I would have a concern about is how are we going to provide large amounts of funding if it comes to third-party transportation? However, annually, as the numbers increase at the district, every three-year cycle that you rewrite for the grant, you can also increase in what your ask is for the federal dollars. So as long as you have the evidence that shows the need for these services, it'll reflect what you ask for overall in a funding. So there's always going to be access to dollars. However, I think the process in itself sometimes acts as a barrier in itself, but that's a whole federal kind of idea. But there's always control over how you write, what you write for, and really the evidence that applies in the work that you need to get done.
So if I understood you, the needs that go beyond what the federal funding provides for is being met by the TES?
Yes.
Okay. So we all just need to keep donating to TES?
Oh, yeah. I'm going to make sure that I buy some donuts for them more often.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Like I said, it's a very unique thing that I've not seen in other districts to the capacity that they offer our kids.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Okay, you too. Moving on to 7.3, Youth Shelter Update. That must be Todd. Ties right in.
Good evening again. Order of vacation. Dr. Schaefer, Chief Operations Officer.
Don't touch it.
You know, as we just heard the presentation, how much more can this align with what we just heard? Not just with a specific area in STRIVE, but really our entire portrait of a grad. So an update on the Northern Colorado Youth Shelter. Tonight, just real quick, want to touch on-
Keep waiting for the lights to go down.
So I'd like to touch on the partners because as we just heard, this is bigger than just us. The process schedule, what the facility will look like, our projected services, and then just some questions. So when you look at our collaborating partners, again, this is bigger than TSD. You know, we have the city level in Laramie County, PSD, Weld County Schools we've talked to, Greeley Schools. So this is expanding out bigger than just our community because the issue is bigger than just us. We also are working with the State of Colorado as we got the grant. They're working through a contract process with us. And it was even exciting to hear through the state employees that this is one of the first projects in this grant funding that they put forward because of the uniqueness and excitement for this just on the state level. Just an update on schedule. So this is the same schedule we've looked at now since February 23. We're now in, obviously, October, and we've stayed pretty well on track. So we have received the grant dollars. We've started building design, doing some building investigation. We're about halfway through the design process, which I'll touch on in a moment here. And then we're still tracking for an overall completion quarter four of 2024. Just to recap, the funding for this project, it's coming from grants. So both the infrastructure costs of actually transitioning the building from where it's at now that you see- So, both the infrastructure cost of actually transitioning the building from where it's at now, that U C Center, to the youth shelter. Also received, we, as in Matthew's House, our operating partner, received a million dollars of operating funds. We have a million and a half from Larimer County. So, the county commissioners have given, I'll say, their commissioner awarded one point five million to the project. And then we have committed donor of five hundred thousand annually already. And one of the pieces that, you know, going into this, the infrastructure piece is an important piece, but the operation and sustainability of the project was just as important as the transition. So, the exciting part is, you know, we're seeing that come to fruition. And then Matthew's House, they have a whole nother process and plan for sustainability. But even before we opened the doors, you know, there's years of operating funds already available. Couple notes just want to add, is we had a community meeting with all the neighbors in the area. It was probably one of the more moving community meetings I've been in. Some have other comments. But this one, the neighborhood really embraced and came back and said, how can we help? You know, we, this is something that we can see as a need. Leaving the meeting, you know, the people just wanted to learn more and talk, and how can they help, and donate, and volunteer. And there was a gentleman that had a woodworking shop, said, I would like to show my woodworking shop so I can teach. And so I say that because, you know, it, it was, it was very impactful to see that community come together in that area and embrace what we're doing here. The, some of the next steps you'll be seeing in the few months is the naming process. So, by board policy, because it's a T S D facility, we have to go through a naming process. So, that is kicking off here in the next month, and we will get students, community members, anyway, the same process we've gone through before, to name the facility. I, I included a link to a video there, and I obviously can't see it here. But I think it's important. It just provides a general overview to the board and community about, one, the need, the Matthew's House, what they do, and how this, this facility is really going to focus on our youth. And up, excuse me, an update on services. You'll see that the Matthew's House has really divided their services into six different buckets. So, between life skills, housing, employment, drop-in center, mental, mental and physical health, and then education. So, they're defining really what is going to be each one of those buckets. But that's where they're starting as far as services when the facility opens. That's what they'll be looking at to provide for the students. You will see on the next slide, an updated floor plan. So, it's pretty similar to what you've seen before. There has been a lot of youth input. There's a lot of community input. A lot of eyes are watching this. This is a pretty specific, trauma-informed design just for this type of model of building. So, we're going through the pricing process now to make sure we're staying in line with the budget that was approved. And then we should be getting the design complete in the December, January timeframe. So, then kickoff permitting and construction. Also provided in the link is just a three-D video of what the facility will look like. You'll see there's some pretty unique aspects to it. It's not your typical school building. The design is very intentful, a lot of attention around materials and flow just for the students that'll be in the facility. So, from there, just want to provide a brief update to the board and see if there's any questions on where we're at.
I would just like to second what Todd said about seeing the change in the demeanor that evening at the community forum that we had. To just watch the people who came in kind of briskly and not real sure about the whole thing, to just all of a sudden thinking, yes, how can I help? I want to volunteer. Do you have a website that we can go to? And it was, it was amazing to just see the transformation of them just by building trust with them. It was pretty neat.
I really wish we could watch the video. I, I really do. And I, I say that because it is in here. Everybody can go home and watch it, or if you're at home now, you can watch it as soon as we're done. You don't want to miss it.
No, you want to be sure.
I mean, I know all of our videos of students, you know, we love them. But there is something about this video I thought I knew. I thought I knew. And my heart broke into a thousand pieces when I watched this, and I'm just, I'm amazed at both of you for your leadership in this. And, and what you're doing to really, you know, give people a home and find great partners, and to lead this, and to do some things that are, are truly committed to doing the things we say we're going to do. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Stu?
Not a question, but a comment. I also attended the community meeting. Barb was there. I can't remember whether any other board members were there or not. But I, before getting to the, to that community meeting, I expected a meeting that was probably going to be rather tense. I thought there would be people there who either understandably, justifiably, or not, might have the not-in-my-backyard mentality. I didn't sense that from anybody. As Barb mentioned, people wondered what they could do to help, if there was a website that they could visit. And my understanding is that there's a Lutheran church across the street from the building, and they had quite a cooperative arrangement with the Early Childhood Center of Monroe, and that was operating there. And that there are people from the church who have already reached out and said, what can we do now that the facility has changed, the needs are changing? Perhaps there's something that we can do as a neighborhood church to help with this. So, I guess all in all, I was just pretty astounded because I expected some resistance and some pushback, and I wasn't aware of anything. So, and I think that community meeting was very important because it was very important. So, thanks.
Anybody else? Pam? No?
I have. It's kind of a in-the-weeds question. It might not be for you, Todd, but I've been thinking about the number of foster students we have, and the fact that, you know, once they turn eighteen, they're literally kicked out of the foster care system. They're, they're done. So, a lot of our seniors turn eighteen, you know, September, October, November. They have the whole senior year to still carry on. And I know plenty of foster families will keep them for that, that, you know, senior year, even if they're eighteen. But do we know, like, do we have some kids that do actually get released out on their own when they turn eighteen out of the foster care system?
Well, I would say fortunately, and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was kind of.
No, but I do know that that law actually recently changed, that there is now a, a period to where it's just not eighteen and done.
Okay.
It's eighteen and twenty-one with some restrictions that you can sustain that foster housing. And I also know, too, Matthew's House goal behind this is just not, you know, that they have other services. That's what's great about the partners, not just besides this youth shelter. So, they have other continuation of services outside of the shelter that they can always offer with housing vouchers and those different pieces that we shouldn't, you know, I can't say it's not going to happen, obviously, but the, the system has changed enough to allow an opportunity for those students now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Nancy?
I loved watching the video. It, stuff like that is so cool, the way, I don't know how they do it, but it's really cool. One thing, though, when I was watching it, because for me, I know that these youth are unaccompanied, and I also believe it's really important for them to learn life skills so that they can know how to take care of themselves. And so, I know that the, the commercial kitchen looked like it had a stove and oven and all that. The community kitchen, which I'm guessing that the students won't have access to the commercial, but they do to the community, I don't know if it's possible, but I would love to see if there was a way to add some sort of stove in the community kitchen so that these students can learn how not to just microwave a frozen meal when they're hungry or they need something, but how to actually cook food from scratch, which is more nutritious and better for them. And then the other part to that is, and I can't remember, I don't know if there's enough space. It would be great if we could figure out, because they're probably going to be there year-round, if we could do some sort of summer garden where they could learn how to, like, where does food come from? And grow their own, and then go in the community kitchen and, and cook, cook it up. I don't know if that's possible, but if we're looking at trying to help these kids learn life skills so that they can take care of themselves, I think that would be really worth, would have value.
Yeah, thank you. And I do know the kitchen topic is, but it's the hottest topic of design right now. Because of just what you're talking about, is how do you integrate, and where is the appropriate place to integrate students into it? So, the commercial, you know, some of the conversation is, is a truly commercial, or can it be split to be part residential, part this? So, yeah, that is one of the pieces that the entire design team and input teams are working on now. And there is, we'll get maybe a future update, some thoughts on the outside, and see, look at, yeah, options like that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. We're excited to watch this grow. All right. We have a couple of written reports, or just one. One of, yeah, it's financial, correct? And are there any additional requests for information from the board? All right. There doesn't appear to be any, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting. All right, there doesn't appear to be any, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting.